Good evening, I'd like to call the September 5th, 2017 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Is anybody taping the meeting?
Free cam.
Okay, and Ally's also taping for, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. The one job you have.
It's not my job. This is too technical or advanced for me.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have a very busy agenda this evening. We have a Board of Health variance at 6:00. Then we'll be heading into executive session. We'll be coming back out of executive session to finish up our meeting. We'll be looking and reviewing Board of Selectmen's minutes, approve a one-day entertainment license for public services, discuss an email by the COA Barbara LaFleur, discuss town hall phone issue, discuss the village schoolhouse for storage and possible sprinkler and updated flooring, approve and sign indirect cost allocation plan for the water sewer enterprise, discuss adding noise regulation to the Board of Health regulations. We have a bunch of things under personnel, and I have a feeling that Charlie will be busy in the next few weeks if we have this hurricane come our way. So he'll have some stuff on the agenda at that time. Anyway, with that being said, it is 6:00, and I'd like to talk about Six Eider Way and Michael Burns for a variance.
My name's Tom Morris, I work with Outback Engineering.
Do you have the green cards?
I don't think we notified any butters because it wasn't affecting anyone. The variance was a setback to the property line of the road. So there was no directed butters that were affected.
There was no directed butters. Charlie?
I'll call the hearing to order. I have the presentation.
Okay.
So, we're asking for two variances. One is the separation of groundwater to be reduced from four feet to three feet. This will...
Do you have another copy of this?
I think I just have the one.
Oh, you're seeing it?
That's fine. Can you see your chart?
I can see one of these numbers real quick. This is...
So we're asking for the separation of groundwater so that we don't have to put in a pump or put a mound right up close to that property line. It'd be tough to fit in the grading. And then we're also asking for the setback variance from 20 feet to, I believe, nine. Get nine to the right of way. And that's it?
Will that affect the stormwater runoff there anymore?
No, I don't think it's mounded at all. So the grading will stay the same.
There are no private wells in the area?
No, there is an existing one pretty much right on the field, but it's actually going to be removed and tapping into the town water there.
How many bedroom systems is designed for?
Four, I believe.
And you have the circulations for four bedrooms? Your soils are suitable, four bedrooms in that area?
Yeah.
That size system?
Yeah.
So it's not an increase from where?
Two minutes per inch.
All right. It's not an increase from where they were?
Anyone from the public wish to ask any questions? That being so, I will close the section of the public hearing. Any questions from the board being requested at this time?
So the variance is from the side of the field to the street layout, correct? Onto that right of way, looks like?
Yep.
Here's the edge of the street layout, correct?
Yes, that's the edge of pavement.
And you're going to remove the well that's currently there?
Yes.
Yeah, I was also...
I'm going to make a motion to allow the variance down to nine feet with the condition that the well is removed prior to the installation of the field.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, before we head into executive session, is anybody here for public discussion?
Yes.
Okay. You come up.
Would it be okay if I just sit here? I just want to come on the table.
Sure. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Trima Teves. Spelled T-E-V-E-S. I reside on 5 Nottingham Lane in Assam.
Okay.
I dropped off to the Board of Selectmen at the Town Hall a four-page letter. I don't know if you've received it yet.
I read the letter.
Okay.
An email.
The Friday.
Okay, so that's the reason for my appearance here today. I'd like to just go over a few things of my concerns and answer any other questions.
I just want to caution you, this is public discussion, so the board is not going to be able to have any input. We can just hear you out if you want to be put on a regular agenda for, you know, for further discussion and, you know, whether we come up with a solution for you. That would have to take place in another two weeks from now. So I am more than willing to hear you, but I don't want your expectations to be at one level where we can only do, you know, a certain thing.
I have no much of a...
Okay, thank you so much.
So, as I said, I'm here to talk to you about my issues that I had a conversation with Free Town Officers on the 26th, and I wrote a letter to you and the chief on the September 1st. I want to make it very clear that I'm here to represent myself and only myself and my concerns, and I don't represent any other entity or any other person. I've been a resident of Free Town Assam Village for over 16 years. Just to let you know that I've got 15 years, to let you know my basis of knowledge, my experience, I've got 15 years working in the insurance industry. I'm a licensed auto appraiser in the state of Massachusetts. I've held my license for 27 years. I'm in my 22nd year of law enforcement career, 19 of which have been on the road on patrol or field. I spent three years as an accident reconstructionist where I investigated numerous and various types of crashes, and it's a field of study of which I'm recognized as an expert witness. I've had specific specialized training in bicycle, motorcycle, pedestrian, and human factors issues as they relate to collisions. I've also worked with and raised money for the Massachusetts Brain Injury Association and brain injury research projects. I believe that my training and experience puts me in a unique position to speak on the topic of bicycle safety, roadway safety, child safety, and bicycle laws. I hope you would agree and that I'm not your average reporting party when it comes to voicing concerns over children playing in the street, and that's what the gist of my letter was. I was going to read parts of that letter.
You can.
I want to take a bit of time, or anyone else's. I trust that you read it in its entirety, and it speaks for itself. But suffice it to say that the safety of the children that reside on that street and visit that street is of my paramount concern. And I see that they're playing in the street unsupervised on a number of different vehicles that aren't regulated and shouldn't be on the road. Bicycles are certainly allowed on the road as long as they file the good bicycle rules that are put in place for their safety. It's my distinct impression that they haven't received any kind of input from anyone as to what those are because the kids will stay in the roadway and won't get out of the way of cars either because they're just not aware of what the rules of the roads are or they just don't want to. I don't know which, in some case I think it's one way, in some case I believe it's the other. The children I know range in age from five to 14, so sometimes I think that their age may have an impact on their ability to understand what the rules of the road are and what side they need to be on and what's acceptable behavior on the road and what's not. As you may know and appreciate, Nottingham Way is a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac, a little translation of it is bottom of sack. It's not, you can do anything you want. That's not the literal translation. And that's where we come, I come to crossroads with my neighbors. It's my understanding from conversations with them recently, as recently as yesterday, that they believe because it's a cul-de-sac, the children can play as they please, that it's in fact their own personal playground, and that's not appropriate. It's subject to Chapter 90, Mass. General Law, Chapter 90 Motor Vehicle Law statutes. It is a public way. It was accepted by the town, I believe, in 2002. So while bikes may ride on the road, they should have the right single file, they can ride to a rest. All the laws that, actually, I gave you the package, so I'm just reiterating what you've already read and had access to. So the crux of my concern is that this is allowed to happen on a daily basis, and I, as a person of law enforcement and a resident of that area, are put in the undesirable position to try to address it and not become adversarial about it. I've had some very calm discussions on that, you know, Ohio tolemness with my neighbors to explain to them what their rights and responsibilities are with regards to their children. Their children playing in the street started last year, it's increased tenfold this year, both in duration time that they're out there, the amount of children that are involved, and the time that they're out there. And it's not just the neighborhood children, it's also children that are visiting. I have, as you can appreciate, coming up from South Main Street onto Nottingham Way, the road is a quarter of a mile long. It inclines, so the visibility of the roadway ahead is somewhat limited until you actually get up onto the road, and then it curves right for a bit and then it curves left. Also affects the visibility of the roadway and the children in it. I had occasion to see the kids playing yesterday. I did some videotaping, I was on. I called the Free Town Police Department to ask them to respond, fully expecting that I was going to have their support in enforcing the motor vehicle laws, not in a punitive way, but just to say, she's right, you need to teach them good habits. I noticed that all the kids were wearing helmets. A couple of the kids came over and talked to me as I was waiting for Free Town PD. So it wasn't an adversarial thing, and then Free Town Police showed up on scene and it became adversarial. Where the police officer stepped out of the vehicle, dismissively told me it's a cul-de-sac, and I said, it's a cul-de-sac, but it's 30 mile an hour, not posted zone, it's a public way, and the kids shouldn't be playing in the middle of the street. They can ride their bikes as long as they're continuously moving. They can't leave their bikes in the roadway or on the sidewalk. And I think, you know, kids are creating more room. We all live on a parcel land that's an acre and a half or more, and we all have paved dropways. So there's really no reason for them to play in the street. If they want to ride their bikes in the street, absolutely, as long as they follow the rules of the road. I detailed for you in that letter a number of my concerns specifically. I won't bore you with them now, but I do want to read for you a few things here. From an article written June 7th, 2011, I can give you a copy as well, because if you don't have this before. William Lucy is a professor at the University of Virginia. He's a former chair of the Charlottesville Planning Commission. He's concentrated his professional work on the study of streets and roadways and their impact on lifestyles. At a day-long forum yesterday on Intelligent Cities and National Building Museum, Lucy couldn't barely wait to lay into cul-de-sacs, which he said would, designed for safety, would end up being more dangerous than through streets. Am I speaking well?
I can hear you.
Okay. And so they turn what should be a 100-yard walk into a two-mile drive, and they put more people in cars for more reasons than they should, Lucy said. And because they get lulled into a sense of security, said, parents don't teach their kids about street safety and the difference between street and sidewalk and driveway and yard. And I believe that this very succinctly puts what we're experiencing on Nottingham Way. Again, it started last year, it's intensified this year, it's never been an issue up until this point for the 16 years that I've been there. I think I'll end that. I'll give you a copy of this if you don't mind adding to what you have. I have a layer of the neighborhood, and you have the bike laws. That was a package that I handed out to three of the families. Again, it was my sincere and earnest attempt to try to get Free Town Police to be on board with me and say, yeah, you know what, we got to work something out, maybe have a bike rodeo here where we can teach the kids proper ways to ride their bike, talk to the parents about bike safety. Instead, I was again met with, we're not going to do anything, I'm not going to bust these kids. And instead of taking, I wasn't looking for a punitive action. I have, as I said, I could write tickets too, I don't. I had one father challenge me to write some tickets, and that's not what I want to do. I just want your kids to be safe out here. And despite the fact that I passed out the paperwork, they were out of the game yesterday, and that's why I called the police. The police response has been disappointing, to say the least. I have, at the end of my driveway across the street right now, for unknown purposes, the speed radar trailer that they put in different places, and I take offense to that. It's an affront to what I do for work. It's an affront to what I'm trying to do to get these kids in compliance. From August 26th to August 28th, I've talked to the families, and they were in compliance up until yesterday. What I was told by the officer that responded was that, well, you have statewide jurisdiction. And I said, no, I know, and I've already tried to talk to the street people, I was just looking for you to back me up a little bit and let them know that this isn't acceptable. And maybe, I was hoping to work cooperatively with Free Town PD and maybe do, like I said, a little academy for the kids, you know, whatever the big... I'm not looking to be punitive. I just want the kids to be safe, and they're not. And for the police department to take the stand, they weren't going to do anything, which is exactly, they weren't going to do anything. It's a cul-de-sac, I think, is remiss. I don't know if there's another word for it. You can have discretion in applying the law. You can write a warning, you can do a verbal warning, you can write a ticket, you can take their bikes, or you can just have a conversation with them to make them aware of what's right and wrong. And that's what I was hoping to do. When I spoke to the two officers from Free Town on the 26th, they suggested that we speak to the selectmen, the selectmen's... So that's one. My neighbor's here as well. We have video of the goings-on that are concerning, the way the kids are traveling in the road across the street. I realize that this may not be the venue right now, because this is the first meeting I've ever been to in 16 years. I've never really felt the need to have to address the selectmen, thankfully. Not that you don't love the people. So I think I'd like to take you up on that opportunity. I did, when I spoke to the neighbors yesterday before the police came, I told them that we were coming to the board meeting today, there was one available, and that they wanted to air their concerns or ask any questions. I'm just looking for a little backup to make sure that the laws are enforced. Again, not in a punitive way, just to let them know that it's not okay to play in the streets like they do, jumping ramps and whatnot.
I'm not going to comment on anything, only because the police department's not here to defend themselves in any way, shape, or form, so I have no comment in that area to the board.
It's also not on the agenda, so it's not appropriate for this comment.
My only suggestion would be, or question would be, would you be willing to work with the Free Town Police to carry out such a rodeo?
Charlie, absolutely.
Okay, that's my, you answered my question.
We've worked together.
Yeah, that's just my question.
I appreciate it.
All right, so that's a step, a step in the right direction.
The next thing would be to ask to be put on the agenda to talk about the bicycle rodeo.
I'll stand.
And then that would be a vehicle for at least a conversation about that.
Okay. I appreciate that, how we will about that.
So you can get in contact with Ally through email or phone, and she'll put you on for the next agenda.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Is this public discussion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go right ahead.
I want to know if we can get a police officer to sit down by XL at 6:30 in the morning, or 6 o'clock in the morning. Note all the trucks going in.
Doing a traffic help type thing? Is that what you're asking?
No, he's lining all his trucks up at 6 o'clock with his gate open, and when no one's there, he just lets them all in. I mean, I come out of the house at 6 o'clock in the morning, and I can hear them already over there backing up with the beepers going. So I drove down there this morning and waited for a few minutes, and fair enough, he's got the gate open, come on, and bringing them all in and dumping all this up, and then they're going back out. And I'm like, not even 7 o'clock, it's 6, 6 o'clock, 6:30. I'm like, I don't know if the police officers will help, but at least it can be noted then, instead of me calling every...
Yeah, we can call Carlton and have them do that.
I hate driving over there, I don't want to get a flat tire yet with all the nails over there, so I'm like...
Yeah, let's call Carlton and have them do that. I don't want to say what day we're going to do that on.
They'll just have increased enforcement and everything.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else for public discussion? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel. David Demarche, town administrator. And for number two, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the town hall, library, highway union, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the effect of the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacico, yes.
Shall we move that?
Order. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the Selectmen Minutes from July 10th, 20th, 24th, 25th, 27th of 2017, and August 7th and 14th.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Approve a one-day entertainment license on September 30th, 2017 for public services.
Anybody here to speak to it?
No.
I'll make a motion to allow, endorse the entertainment license for one day for public services.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Just want to make sure that we let the police department know as well. Discuss emails sent by Council on Aging Barbara LaFleur regarding the Boy Scout and Girl Scouts. Is Barbara here? Anybody from the COA here?
No, but the Boy Scout and Girl Scout are here.
Okay. Do you want to come up and talk to the board? Is there a chair there? You can have, there you go. You put it right on that chair.
Bring another table.
Hi, my name is Caroline Lambert. I'm part of Troop 81288 in the Free Town Lakeville Service Unit, and I'm currently working on my Girl Scout Gold Award. The Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scout, comparable to the Boy Scouts Eagle Scout Award. After recently hearing about the rusty patch bumblebee being added to the Endangered Species Act list through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, I felt strongly compelled to do my part to promote, educate, and make people aware of the dangers that all of our pollinators are facing in today's world and how we can all help to make a difference. For my project, I would like to build several raised beds to create some pollinator-friendly gardens next to the pavilion located in the back of the building. If my project is approved, I will then submit my application to council for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board have any questions?
I have no questions.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I have no questions.
Okay.
So you're proposing to create a bed to bring pollinators in?
Yes.
And what will be in the bed?
Just flowers that the pollinators like.
Right. How big are, how big are you looking at it?
Comparable to what is already built on the other side of the building.
Very nice.
All right, thank you.
My name is Chris Lambert. I am a Boy Scout, a Life Scout from Troop 22 in East Totten, and I am looking for approval for my project. I'm planning on replacing the fences in the front of the building, the two side fences, replacing those and staining those. I'm also looking to remove or clean up the vegetation around the propane tank and hopefully put something down to prevent it from happening again. And also staining the benches, gliders, picnic tables, and raised bed planters that are on the back of the building. And also building handicap accessible picnic tables for the handicap people that are here because the other picnic tables don't have, you guys don't have that. So I was hoping to build two of those and stain the other picnic tables and everything else that's back there. So...
People have any questions?
I'm good.
How much are you going to be charging us for?
Right!
Do you have the experience replacing windows?
What is your timeframe? Just kidding.
Any questions? My, I have just a question from the building inspector, any concerns that he knows of or issues that he has?
No, I was told about this by Barbara, and I think it's, you know, a terrific fit. We've done a lot of work here, and I think it's a great idea that you have. It's a lot of work that you're proposing to do, that's why I think you're getting a response. But yeah, you know, glad to help you any way that we can, but it sounds terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd love to make the motion to allow both Christopher and Caroline to go ahead with their projects and help improve the environment around here by increasing our pollinators to the area and helping improve the climate here by sprucing the place up a little bit and maybe building some much-needed handicapped accessible picnic tables.
I'll second that motion.
And anytime you need the board, as in them two, to help you out, just let me know, okay?
Be happy to do that.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're very happy to have you guys come forward. You're tremendous role models to the rest of your youth. You should be proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go home and coach your homework now. I think we kept you long enough, sorry.
Spoken like a teacher.
All right. Discuss town hall phone issue. Ally?
We're still having problems at the town hall. I had DEG come in, and they said that the phone system is password protected, so he believes it's the motherboard, but he can't get to it. So we do need voice systems to come in, so I just want authorization to have that.
I'll make a motion to authorize Ally to reach out to voice systems and have them come in.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Well, I think we need to revisit the phone system.
So let's have voice systems come out, give us what they want to do, and then we can revisit. We can actually look at the two proposals and we can revisit that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. All right. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss use of village schoolhouse for storage and possible sprinkler and update flooring. Is that you, Scott?
Well, yeah, I came tonight just in case you had a question about sprinklering, and I looked it up in the code, and it wouldn't be required based upon what we're proposing to use it. And it wouldn't really be triggered, I don't think, until we did a building of similar use up to 7,500 square feet. It just wouldn't, you know, fire protection for sprinkler wouldn't be required, wouldn't have to do it.
Would it be prudent, though, or revise storing vital town documents?
Once again, it'd be your own personal decision, I don't know. I mean, I've understood before that there had to be rated systems, but I wasn't sure that you had to have, you know, a sprinkler system because I don't know, I don't know what the risks would be to store the documents and the risk of fire. I mean, we could put some type of notification device with the fire department to get there, similar to what we just did at the town hall, you know, notifying them. But as far as protecting the documents from fire, I don't know how to do that, how to limit that risk. Something I would know.
So what is the benefit, I guess, from instead of keeping them at town hall in the basement to moving them to the schoolhouse? What's the benefit?
Well, I don't think the idea is the basement storage right now. I think the idea is that we're, I've been talking about limiting the amount of weight that's on the second floor at the town hall. I mean, I think that's the benefit, to save the stress on the building and to get it next door because it's out of the floodplain, you own it, and it's not a lot of money to get it up and usable. I mean, I will be putting together a six-month plan, as you asked for, Robbie, to try to lay out what's needed to get that done. And I guess we could look into, I mean, the design and what's the benefit of, you know, protecting those documents. I think right now... I think right now, we just have a big weight issue at, at the town hall.
And how do you talk to anybody in the historical commission about that at all?
Been working with, um, historical commission, uh, you know, Mary Brown has been involved with, um, you know, discussing, because I guess the ben- the first benefit that's always been talked about with the schoolhouse has been some type of storage, whether it's for the police or for the town. We're, we're really not talking about the second floor, I haven't, you know, no, I haven't heard from anybody who said that we have an idea of the second floor, this would just be the first floor. It's about eight hundred and eighty square feet and, um, the concrete work, I think, would be the first maintenance step, you know, to getting that done. And as you guys know, we're working on repairing the existing windows and, um, the council's been coming over there, gonna take a look at maybe four or five that are done and see if it's getting done the way that they think it should be getting done and, and we'll work that out. Just kind of just what's going on, only really two steps right now, not that I'm here to talk about anything more, but I will get you that plan for six months for the benefit of maybe reducing the amount of weight that's in the building.
Yeah, I can't, I, I have nothing in mind, I need to make a decision to go one way or the other without having-
I'm really only here for the sprinkler system question, because I saw it on the agenda, I talked to Charlie today and I said, I'll look that up, so it's, if it's not required, that's really just what I'm letting you know, it's, it's not required.
My thinking is that we have this structure that we, taxpayers have, through a number of, of different avenues, paid over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make weather tight. Building's weather tight now. We have this major issue with the weight on the second floor. The, I mean, my, my feeling is, the building was designed in eighteen eighty as a town hall for, as an auditorium. You know, I, I just roughly said a hundred and fifty people at a hundred and fifty pounds, that was like twenty-two hundred, uh, probably twenty-two thousand pounds. Uh, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure we probably have twenty-two thousand pounds on the second floor. Uh, if we remove the records from there, uh, Kim had, has this plan of, of making racks, uh, that we passed an article at the, uh, town meeting. My feeling is, if we could put it, take it, put it out of the floodplain, put it in a building that's, uh, is now weather tight with, with, uh, using that building, removing the records, uh, from harm, we're reducing the harm on the building, I think it's kind of over the, the way to go.
But the racks that she had designed were specifically designed for the basement of the town hall, so we, we'd have to ask her-
I don't think she designed racks.
The article was for those racks for, for the basement of the town hall?
Right, I don't think there's any, there's, uh, that there's any, um, oh-
No.
Talking, talking to her, that there's, there's no design, the, the idea is that they install these racks. Those racks couldn't be put almost-
Well, that's what I want, I would want to, you know, make sure that-
And, and you could, you can even break it up into long-term and short-term storage, the stuff that she might need to reference throughout the year, she'd stay downstairs in the basement, and the stuff that's long-term storage would go next door. Uh, I, I like the idea it gets out of the floodplain too.
I agree too.
And her, her talk is if we don't do that, then we're gonna have to get something like containers. I don't think that we really want storage containers, uh, when we have, first of all, when we have the building and just the looks of them.
And, and I think that you both know, because you're both on the committee, knowing that we're moving along with the police, uh, station. You know, once we know whether we're going to, forward with construction, then we can start to bring back the other committee and start to talk about the other buildings that need to be-
That was one of the concerns I, I, um, mentioned to Scott, that, you know, we, the building committee has a long-term plan and looked at some of the different buildings that need to be upgraded and replaced and one of the conceptual plans was tying the two together, which the, the committee seemed to be in favor of. So we didn't want to spend a lot of money on something that's gonna end up being torn up.
Right.
So that's where Scott was saying, you want to come up with a plan, a, a long-term plan, see what we can and can't do and what is advantageous and what might be redundant and say, no, we don't want to do that until, you know, the building committee comes up with a direction.
My, my thing is putting-
The floor, I don't think-
The floor, the floor in the-
I don't think that matters one way or the other.
That's just a maintenance item, the concrete is replacing.
Doing things to keep the, uh, the building as moisture-free as we can, but that's all.
Agree.
All right, to stay on agenda though, you're only here to speak towards the sprinkler system, it's not needed, the, the sprinkle or that. And you're, you don't have an opinion one way or another whether we should or not, that's probably something the fire chief would have an opinion on whether we should or not.
Right. I mean, they probably have other systems that are wet systems, like Halon systems, you know, just specifically for those documents. If the temperature goes up, the Halon puts it out and it notifies you, and I don't think it would be a sprinkler, a wet sprinkler system.
I would venture to say since it's not heat, it would have to be a dry system either way, whether it's, you know, gets purged off and the water flows through afterwards after there's a, you know, a, a, one of the links, the, the usable link there, heat, heat link.
Yeah, I think, I think it would probably would be a Halon, but we'll, we'll look into that, like I said, with, with a, with a long-term, uh, decision and we'll try to loop everybody in to get their, their opinions.
So my recommendation would be to force the fire chief to give his opinion on it.
Okay. Can we do that, Charlie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a couple of comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, we think it's a good idea, you know, Charlie, you know, to cement the wall and use the building, I mean, that was the purpose of the whole thing, to use that building. The, one of the things, like, once, once the project starts, are we some to oversee the project, cement, whatever it's been done? One of our concern, we were there today, one of our concerns was, is like, who will go oversee it once the project's done? And who's gonna decide what can go in, what can't go in, and if people gotta go in and out, like revolving door, putting things in it? It's pretty a mess in there right now. We plan for the end of the week, Mary and I at least, gonna go down.
I'll be there with you.
I'll tell you too, okay? And, uh, you know, some of the stuff we have from the odd sales, we're gonna give it to the society, if, if they don't want it, or things that they don't use from any odd sales, we'll just throw it away, so get rid of that, out of that basement, so it won't be there. But it seems like, it's kind of like anybody could just walk in and out kind of thing and, you know.
I would, I, I would, as we said, you know, you're gonna be putting records that are not current records into the space, so basically you've got to become just storage space for records that are, basically, we have to keep a, a hot copy for almost everything-
I totally agree, Charlie. I'm not even, I'm not even debating that.
Yeah, right, so-
I, I totally agree, but in the past, you know, things have disappeared out of there and people have gone in there and what I'm saying is-
The building would have to be secured.
Who's gonna be charged, who's gonna be courting, what people-
If we have vital town records in there, the building would have to be secured and it would be in a relocking key.
And I don't think that even, we're not gonna hand out key fobs to everybody, you know what I mean? So I think we would have to either go through the board or the town administrator at that point, um, and, you know, now that we're, you know, uh, close to having our town administrator on board, you know, that's gonna be the point person, so if somebody needs to get in there, they're gonna have to go through him first. So I think that that, that lies some security for you guys.
'Cause I know when, originally the police was thinking about it, they were gonna have it locked over, you know what I mean?
Mm-huh.
Like a fence, so that no matter who went in, they couldn't have gotten to their stuff,
right?
That's it. You know, which didn't materialize because the, the container, they're gonna build a building, but there was a way of, no matter who went in, you couldn't have gotten to the police stuff, is what I'm saying.
Right.
You know, but it, it, it has a way sometimes, just being a drop-off point for anything you're on a hot-
No, I agree. No, I agree. I think that this is, the, the purpose of this is just for records. I don't think it's for, you know, office supplies or anything like that, I think it's right now, it's clearly-
Real balance.
Right, clearly for records, so I, like I said, with the new town administrator coming on board, I think you'll have another level of security.
And the windows, that, that whole process has started, the replacement and repair for windows, so that's in process, that's good.
It is a good thing, yeah. All right. You got anything else? Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for staying and letting us know.
Sorry it took so long, I wasn't, I really-
No, you're not. I really wasn't expecting it.
All right, approve and sign in the rest, cost allocation plan for the sewer water enterprise. Did you guys have time to look this over?
I did.
And do you have questions?
I do.
I do too. Um, do you know if, um, Kim looked this over at all?
She's the one that presented it.
So she's okay with all the figures and everything else?
Yes.
What are your concerns, Robbie?
No, I just, where the figures all came from, the accounting itself, I was hoping either Kim or, um, somebody from the water department would be here, but-
They came from Kim. You actually did this once when it was just the water, I mean, two thousand and sixteen.
Said it, we're all doing this.
Right, now we're just including the sewer-
Because of the sewers included with it.
Yeah, because you merged it.
My, my question was the same thing, I wanted to make sure that Kim looked it over and was in agreement that it just didn't come, you know, just from, not that they couldn't, but just not from downstairs, that Kim had time.
There's an accounting of it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so you need a motion to endorse?
Uh, yep, approve and sign.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, board of health, discuss transfer station dumpsters.
If somebody's here?
Derek's here.
Derek's here.
I, I do have a quote, which I believe you guys have a copy of, but I would like to get more. I've had numerous phone calls out about fixing the dumpsters, buying new dumpsters, scrapping the old dumpsters, and I'm just having a double of a time getting people to get back to me at this point. So I would kind of like to put this off for, uh, two weeks to-
Okay.
Four weeks, just so I can come back at you with more than just one quote.
Right.
But there's, like, I have three pages of notes of who have I called and emailed and waiting to hear back from, so-
Okay.
I'm trying to make some headway on it.
All right, so let's, um, let's try to do it for the next meeting, but if you get to Ally and you say we don't have anything, we'll keep it for the one after that, okay? Are you all right with that?
Yeah, the, the only thing that would be my concern is that we are going to need to have some funds, uh, for the special town, I would say for the special town meeting. It's probably, the, the quotes on the dumpsters are approximately forty-five hundred, you know, give or take some, per dumpster. There is grant money, uh, that we have presently that could go for one dumpster. And then we, I believe, would be able, be eligible for a grant for another dumpster. So we're gonna end up only having to purchase one dumpster.
Okay.
But that's not necessarily what we might want to go with the ad-
Right, so why don't you put together a warrant article for that? If we have to withdraw on town meeting floor, that we don't need it, that we can withdraw it, but I think prepare a warrant article anyway. And, um, we can talk about the money part of that, um, but I would put in more than you need, because otherwise you're gonna, you're not gonna be able to go back unless we go for a reserve fund transfer, so, um-
You need three though?
You need-
Is that what you're looking for, three?
Uh, yes, we need, we need three.
So if you were conservative and use the quote that you have, extrapolate the math out, ask for that amount and then-
Right.
If a quote, well, quote comes in lower, then we just adjust it down.
Exactly. Yeah, we can adjust it to how many for-
We, we may only need to purchase-
Right.
One, so-
But we can always adjust it down.
Yeah, exactly, that, that's my point.
Yeah.
We can adjust, we might want to go in for the four or three.
I'm still kinda hoping I find someone that says that they can repair the dumpsters under what we already have the grant money.
Okay.
And then maybe not half the money.
Right. But because-
But I don't know, like, they could say that the dumpsters are too far gone to fix, that's the only thing. Like, they would actually need to come down, physically see the dumpsters and tell me where we're at.
Um, in the warrant article, I would put, um, purchase and/or repair, so then that way, if we had to use some of that money for repair money, then we would have that vehicle to do that from, so I would do purchase and/or repair. And then that way, that covers both sides of things. You know what I mean? If the grant money doesn't get you to what you need to get. All right? All right. Um, and because the warrant article's gonna close, that's why I'm saying to do it now, don't even bother waiting. All right, thank you. Do you have any other questions? Sorry, John, I took over your spot.
No, no, okay, and the last item there, um, I believe you got a copy of, Lauren drew up, could be a bylaw, uh, for, for noise, and basically it's to cover situations where there's, there's noise, where you may not want to pursue criminal action. And so it regu- it would regulate, uh, what we dis- what we consider to be noise pollution. And I would, I would like to see it basically as a bylaw, um, I-
I don't know, what copy of that?
I don't have that either.
All right, then it was supposed to be-
When's our next meeting? And when does the warrant article go to?
But Charlie, I haven't gotten anything from Lauren either, you said that you were gonna- Did you say that you wanted this as a regulation? If you do it as a regulation, it doesn't need to be a bylaw and then that doesn't need to go to town meeting?
And to throw the whole, regulations don't, aren't required.
All right, then why don't we do it as a regulation?
All right.
But create through the planning board though. Because they're the ones that do regulations, I mean.
But I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about it too, so maybe Lauren can come in and do a, you know, just a little spiel on-
I thought she'd forwarded it.
All right.
She just forwarded it.
Okay.
But, um, the best thing is that you have, say you have a situation where somebody's dying to, we'll say, mow their lawn at six thirty, six thirty in the morning, uh, you don't want to go and charge, you know, disturbing the peace if, you know, you can do it in a regulation, you can say maybe the first time if it persists, then you have an issue, but it would be something that we'd be able to handle an issue non-criminally, you can be able to bring witnesses in even to court of that particular-
All right, that's good. Thanks, John. Personnel?
Personnel, I have a couple, a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I have a memorandum from Jackie Brown. Please find the attached letter from Mr. Gilbert M. Maderas, eighty-five Richmond Road of Stonet, stating his interest in being appointed to one of the vacant seats, seats as a board of registrars. Mr. Maderas has been a Democrat for over two years as required and is not appointed or elected to any position, any other position, also as required. I would like to recommend Mr. Maderas be appointed to the position of board of registrars with an expiration date of March the thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Thank you, Jackie Brown. And then I have a letter from him, um, with his, uh, resume, um, just quickly, the, I'll read his letter, I won't read his entire resume. Dear Mr. Ms., dear Ms. Brown, this is to express my interest in the vacancy of Demo- of Democrat on the board of registrars. I have been a resident of the Free Town since July of nineteen seventy-nine, living at eighty-five Richmond Road of Stonet. I recently retired in June of two thousand sixteen and I now have some available free time and transportation. I have been enrolled as a Democrat for over two years, actually many years. While I have not been active in local, state, or national politics, I have always taken an interest in voting matters and I, as I feel that everyone should be given the opportunity to be heard by their voting, by voting or expressing his or her opinions. I have attended many town meetings and must say, one of the best things about Free Town residents is going to town meeting and saying, you're peace, pure democracy. I have served my nation, nation, state, and community in many, in various, various positions and would be proud to serve the Free Town in some capacity. I have attached my resume for your review. Not having worked for my former, not having worked for my former state employer for some time, I retired state service in nineteen ninety-seven, you should feel free to contact my most recent employer, Sir Jobs of Progress, located at one sixty-four Fifth Street, Florida of Mass. If you wish to review my character or work records with that, with them, my supervisor there, Victor Tavaz, can be reached at, I won't read the phone number, or in the absence of Maria Badat, Director. Signed, Gilbert M. Maderas.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any discussion on the motion? Airing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I have a memorandum of agreement between the board of selectmen and Derek Mader- Macedo, Maderas, sorry, Derek. For clothing allowance, board of selectmen, town of Free Town will agree to provide uniform allowance to Derek Macedo, subject to annual appropriation required as a condition of employment. The amount of the uniform allowance is five hundred dollars for following items identified, job-related shirts, vests, pants, boots, and coats. Receipt of, for allowable items listed above will be provided to the accountant department along with the reimbursement form. This information above clearly sets forth-